This Planning Commission for Wednesday, March 10th. Let's go ahead, called order please.
Chair Hedges?
Here.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Here.
Commission Members Askey?
Here.
DeLapp?
Here.
Jafarian. All present.
Thank you. We're going to do the Pledge Allegiance, please stand, and I'm going to ask Janet, please, to do it for us.
Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Janet.
You're welcome.
We'll now have the appeal notice, I'm not sure who's reading it, Joshua or Alma.
Alrighty, this is in the event that you disagree with the action taken by the Planning Commission in regards to your application, or with any condition of approval of the application which is not a specific requirement of the Norco Municipal Code, you are entitled to appeal such determination or conditions to the Norco City Council, provided that such appeal is filed with the Norco City Clerk within 10 calendar days after the requirements for appeals inclusive of payment of an appeal fee.
Thank you Alma.
Before you continue, can I make a brief comment? I do want to remind everyone that is in attendance tonight, that part of the requirement for attending this public meeting is you need to wear your masks. We've notified that that is not happening, I do want to kindly request that you do that throughout the meeting, that is a requirement.
Thank you sir, I will put mine on. I'll be a bit mumbled, but you'll hear me. Okay, we're coming to the public comments period, so I'll open the public comments and I am going to read this to you. Now is the time to dial in for public comment. You will be placed in a queue and your call will be answered in the order received. You will have three minutes to speak. The call will disconnect promptly at the end of three minutes. You will need to call during each item you wish to speak upon. Callers are asked to abide by public decorum and use language that is appropriate to a public environment. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. If you choose not to call in, please email your public comments to planningcommission@ci.norco.ca.us. Please identify the item you are referencing, and this time now is for public comments that are what is not on the agenda. Anything Lacy?
I currently have no emails and IT, have no phone calls.
Okay, well we'll close this portion, and we'll come back to our agenda, and we'll start with 2A, which I believe is yours Alma.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this is Agenda Item 2A, which is variance 2020-02. This is a request for a variance from the very odd setback requirement of the Norco Municipal Code, Chapter 18.13, for the A1 Zone, to allow an existing garage to be connected via breezeway to the existing house which is located at 2454 Corona Avenue, located within the A1 Zone. So just briefly, as I indicated, this is a request for a variance. There's an existing garage, detached garage legally built, garage approximately maybe 10-plus years, and which has a current setback of approximately 28 feet, which is allowed for a detached accessory building, you know, back in the day. And the existing house has a setback of a minimum of approximately 32 feet. So what's being requested is to be able to build a, kind of like a patio in between, to be able to connect the two structures. So because the garage will now be connected to the primary dwelling, the garage becomes part of the house which has to meet the setback of the primary dwelling, which is a minimum of 60 feet, the existing house doesn't meet, the existing house doesn't meet the current setback requirement. So if the garage is connected, the new setback is 28 feet minimum for the entire house, including the garage, so therefore a variance is required, or required to be approved. The existing house is, like I said, the existing property is located in the A1 Zone. The site, the project site is approximately just over 11,000 square feet. The minimum lot size in the A1 Zone, as the Commission is aware, at least 20,000 square feet, which this falls about almost half, half of the minimum requirement. It has the minimum frontage required of 80 feet, but the minimum lot depth of 200 feet is not met, being at no more than 120 square feet, and it's kind of a unique configuration. Kind of goes, you know, deep, 120 feet, and then it drops down to about 80 feet on the north side. The house is developed with a single-family residence of approximately 1,518 square feet, and a detached garage, as it sits right now, of approximately 662 square feet. And again, the intent is to be able to, again, the existing structures are there, the intent is to be able to connect them via a breezeway, so to speak. But if that happens, then, you know, the garage would, we have the 60-foot variance that is, comes into play because of the connection. The property as it sits does have a unique characteristics, excuse me, characteristics, and as the Commission is aware, there's findings that have to be made in order to granting, in order to be able to grant a variance. And based on the finding number one, then, the one that's required, the number one that's required to be made, there are special characteristics attached to the property which do not generally apply to the properties in the area. And again, this property is non-conforming in more than one instance, and the rest of the findings are basically centered around the uniqueness of the configuration of the lot. And with that, I will conclude, it's a pretty simple staff report, I have attached a resolution of approval, should the Commission determine that the findings can be made for granting of this variance. And with that, I will conclude, the applicant is in the audience and is here to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you Alma. Questions of staff, Phil? Mark? No. Danny?
No.
Okay, alright, alright, we will then, I have none, we'll open the public hearing, and let me read this. Now is the time to dial in for public comment. You will be placed in a queue and your call will be answered in the order received. You will have three minutes to speak. The call will disconnect promptly at the end of three minutes. You will need to call during each item you wish to speak upon. Callers are asked to abide by public decorum and use language that is appropriate to a public environment. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. If you choose not to call in, please email your public comments to planningcommission@ci.norco.ca.us. Please identify the item you are referencing. And would we like to hear from, anyone like to hear from, would you like to speak to us? You can or cannot, it's up to you. Okay, that, alright, that's fine, thank you. Alright, no one has questions for them, we'll bring it back to us, we'll close the, oh, do we have any calls?
I have no emails, Mark, do you have any phone calls? No phone calls.
Okay, well we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to us, discussion and/or...
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve variance 2020-02.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian and a second from Vice Chair Azavito. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission Members Askey? DeLapp?
Yes.
Jafarian?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Okay, thank you. We'll now go to Item 2B, and Joshua, you can, yay!
Thank you Chair Hedges. This is a request for, a request for the conversion of a portion of the existing Enterprise Rent-a-Car building totaling 1,112 square feet to be used for the purposes of washing rental vehicles and ancillary portion of the business's overall operation. The project site is located at 2570 Hamner Avenue, and you can reference that in this Exhibit A in your packet. The original approval of CUP 2005-02 allowed Enterprise Rent-a-Car to establish an existing, in an existing building, and with the approval of the appearance, excuse me, with the approval, the appearance and sites were upgraded, which included adding western articulation features, including wood posts and knee braces. The applicant also upgraded the planters along Hamner Avenue and around the building with new trees and shrubs, and that was done back in 2005. In 2017, the CUP was brought back before the Planning Commission to make the CUP permanent, and the parking law, and, excuse me, and the parking of rental cars in the adjacent public street was discussed as a issue. The CUP at that time was approved with the condition that the display of storage vehicles shall be in the parking stalls immediately in front of the building, leaving the parking spaces adjacent to the street for customer parking. The building itself is only currently being used for half the portion for office, while the other half remains for storage. The request itself is to convert half of the existing 2,901 square foot building for the purposes of washing cars. The only exterior architectural change will be along the western elevation, where there will be an opening for the vehicles to enter the building. The garage opening will be constructed from aluminum anodized framing and glass to match the existing window and glazing along this elevation. Car washing activities will be done through power sprayers and hand drying, which will minimize any potential noise impacts. No mechanical equipment will be installed. In order to provide access, the two spaces directly in front of the opening will be marked off for no parking, in order to provide access to the enclosed car wash. The business is beneficial to the city, as it provides a service to citizens and businesses alike, and is successful at this location. The other benefit is to the new dealerships and repair shops in the city that rely on rental car businesses for customers who own vehicles that are being serviced, so it's a good service to the local residents. The project was circulated for Project Review Board comments, and the only comments were from Engineering Division and from Fire and Safety. The comments were regarding the installation of internal equipment and housing a car wash area internally within the building. In conclusion, a resolution has been prepared for approval, which has been attached to the Commission, if they determine such. Conditions can be added or amended at the discretion of the Commission, and I'm ready to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here if the Commission has any questions.
Thank you Joshua. Danny, questions of staff?
No, I don't have any.
Janet?
No, I have no questions.
Mark?
The only question I have is regarding runoff, I mean, what are they, what are they doing with the water?
As far as water waste, it has to go through our Engineering Department, and they have to put in a special water purifier, and forgive me for the terminology, but there's a special process that they have to go through for water drainage, so that it can be processed and cleaned before it gets into the sewer. Excuse me, clarifier.
Phil, any questions of staff? I have a couple questions, but I'll wait until the applicant speaks. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Now is the time to dial in for public comment. You will be placed in a queue and your call will be answered in the order received. You will have three minutes to speak. The call will disconnect promptly at the end of three minutes. You will need to call during each item you wish to speak upon. Callers are asked to abide by public decorum and use language that is appropriate to a public environment. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. If you choose not to call in, please email your public comments to planningcommission@ci.norco.ca.us. Please identify the item you are referencing. You want to come up and speak to us, please? Okay, please come forward, state your name.
Larry Casares, I'm a design consultant for Enterprise Rent-a-Car. Very happy to be here, I am smiling behind this mask, everybody.
If you can put the microphone, there you go, thank you.
Also want to compliment the City of Norco on their planning staff. I've dealt with four individuals here, and all, nothing short of excellent in service, community service and getting business done. So I really appreciate that, I've been doing this for a lot of years, so, thank you. So I'm here to answer any questions, it's, I've done a lot of these for Enterprise, so...
Any questions?
No, I don't think I have any questions. I use that particular location quite frequently, and I'm glad to see they're gonna be cleaning the cars, it'll help.
Yes.
Questions?
No, I don't have any.
Um, no, no questions, but after looking at the plans, I think it's an excellent use of space, so...
I do have a couple questions. It will not be open to the public, just strictly for the cars for the rental service?
Yeah, it's only for the rental cars.
Okay, and a couple times in here, and this might even be something for the staff, it talks about interior car wash.
Yes.
I didn't quite get that. Are you just washing the inside?
No, the vacant portion, if you're on Hamner, you're looking at the building, to the right is the office, the building's basically cut in half, to the left is a vacant area, there's nothing in there, there's, you know...
So you're saying the washing part is the interior of the building?
It's the interior of the building.
Correct. Okay, yeah, it was confusing of saying, are you just washing the inside of the car?
I know, that makes sense.
No one's ever caught that, that's pretty good.
It's a very private car wash.
But you also have a door that comes down at night.
Yes, it's a door, the door is a sectional door, like residential and commercial we've used. They're sectional, and they're the same materials, the anodized aluminum storefront that's there now on all the windows, and they're tinted windows, same as they are now, so they look to be the same, we have the same trim that's gonna go on right. So there's already a window there now, it's maybe six feet, now you're gonna have a, you know, 10-foot, whatever it is, so...
So it, there's a back door also, or it's just going in one way and then coming out the same?
Yeah, one way and then it'll back out.
No, there can't be homeless people going inside and that kind of thing?
No.
Okay, alright, thank you. That was all the questions I had, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do we, they say, do we have any calls?
I have no emails, Mark, do you have any phone calls? Mark has no calls.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to us, discussion and/or...
No, I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion that we...
I'd like discussion though.
Oh, no discussion.
I'm gonna discuss something, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, come on Tepson.
The only thing I worry about is, okay, Enterprise is there, and I know Enterprise is there and has been there a long time, what kind of building will it leave when Enterprise leaves, where we have, you know, an office building on one side and a car wash on the other? I mean, who fills in that, who's gonna...
Well, it can always be converted, I mean...
Called demo.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Odd, you know, I wanna rent this office space, oh, it has a car wash next to it.
But Enterprise has been there for a very long time, I don't foresee them...
Well, they're opening at Eastvale, that's why I said that, 'cause it's like, oh, okay.
Excuse me, do you mind? We can condition the project so that if the business does go away, Enterprise goes away, we can grandfather that in, and then the garage and the car wash will go away, and we would get rid of it, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I just think it would be easier to rent, as a, you know, an owner of the building, it would be easier to rent without a car wash next to it.
Oh, sure, sure.
Attached to the office building.
Sure.
Okay.
We can make a temporary specific to the use and then go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Alright, sorry, that was my discussion, go ahead, anyone?
Good job, good job.
Oh, thank you.
So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve conditional use permit 2017-10, as modified, modification number one, Enterprise Rent-a-Car LLC.
I second the motion.
Because, help me understand why we would put that type of a condition on, on a public building? I mean, it's, if the landlord, or whoever owns the building, isn't concerned about that, why are we...
My thoughts would be to make it more palpatal for other people to come in and rent it, and I know it's the landlord, but we also are looking out for what's good on Hamner and what fits and what doesn't. I think it would limit the space for what fits and what doesn't if we don't, and, I mean, it's, Enterprise wants to put it there, and if they wanna leave, then it can be put back, I don't see a harm in doing that.
And I think I'd add, under discussion, that building was not built as an Enterprise Rent-a-Car, right? We allowed them...
Correct.
Because it was a good use, which is tough, because it's not a great space.
Right.
We gotta, we gotta really, I'm sorry, thank you for doing your work, but it's ugly as, like, and they did a good job cleaning up the building, they got it so that it works out well, they agreed with our terms of no parking on the streets, I mean, when I think about the original conditions, they've been a really good, a really good partner with Norco. So I think at this point, if they were to vacate, which is always possible, I think, I think we got a pretty good possibility for it to be a good tenant, whoever comes in, and we've also got some good conditions already in here to just make it right.
It just seems to me like we're setting a, I mean, is this setting a bad precedent?
But we often ask people to put things back the way that were in condition, unconditional use, we often do that, that's not setting a precedent.
Do you mind if I let the applicant maybe comment on that and see what he has to say about that solution?
Please come up, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, good question on both sides. This is no different than, if this was a restaurant, you would have to tear up the same center slab as we're doing where the, where the underground clarifier is, it's gonna be cut and then a slope slab to the drain, it's the same thing, in a restaurant you have curbs, you have sinks, floor sinks, plumbing, you have to end up cutting that out, and then the landlord says, okay, I'll give you this allocation, this allowance, we'll fill it in flat, and if you don't like the storefront, if the storefront needs that, then it's very simple, the width of that, you'd have a commercial door and windows, and it's done. So, we've done this too with them, but they pretty much stay where they're at, but, I mean, that would be up to the landlord, but it's, you know...
We have no objection if we add that as a condition?
No, because I guess at that point it would be, it would be the building's owner's responsibility anyway.
Correct.
But I just want to let you know, it's very, it's a simple fix.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, actually, that comment is the thing that I was concerned about, is the ability to enforce it. If Enterprise vacates, Enterprise, who installed it, isn't going to do it.
That's true.
And so now we've ordered a landlord...
That's true.
...who is not a party to this discussion.
Right, because normally, with commercial buildings, they have tenant improvements, so if they have a new tenant come in, that tenant's gonna have its own requirements, and then, and then, so it might be a burden to, but, you know, I mean, I understand where you're coming from.
I think that Chairman Hedges, that those circumstances under which we in the past have said, okay, this is good temporarily, if you vacate, then it goes away, generally haven't applied to renters, or, they've, Lacy's, they've applied to property owners.
I'm okay, I'm with you, I'm fine.
Okay, so I can second the motion?
Well, you want to redo the motion?
I believe we have a motion and a second, and, you know, I bet Lacy's gonna tell us.
My motion and my second was with a modification.
Correct, I think you need to make...
Are we sticking with that?
If you don't want the modification, then somebody needs to make a substitute motion.
Mark?
Or do we vote, or do we vote on that one? No, you may, no, no, you can make a substitute motion, that takes precedence.
There you go.
Okay, I would like to make a substitute motion, that we adopt the resolution as written without any amendment.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Member Askey and a second from Member Jafarian. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission Members Askey?
Yes.
DeLapp?
Yes.
Jafarian?
Yes.
Motion pass.
And I don't know if we're ever gonna close the public hearing, but it's closed. We now go on to 2B, Zone Code Amendment, and this is yours Alma?
And I, yes, and I think, Agenda Item 2C, and I believe John was gonna make a statement real quick.
Oh, sure, I'll make, I'll make a comment before you hear it, and this is partially for the benefit of the Commission, partially for the benefit of the people who may be live streaming and watching this and would like to comment.
Be a little louder, please, yeah.
That's the problem with masks, isn't it? The Zone Code Amendment 2020-05, which pertains essentially to ADUs and junior ADUs, was presented to the Planning Commission back in July of 2020, and to the City Council in August of 2020, that was passed by the Planning Commission. The City Council didn't consider it, based upon discussion occurring at that meeting, pertaining to that and some other issues. It was thought that the better approach might be to submit the proposed ordinance to the State of California for review prior to taking action. As you're aware, the reason we're doing this is not because the City of Norco thinks it's a terrific idea, the reason we're doing this is because state law requires that we do it, and it would be reviewed by Housing and Urban Development by the State of California, once it was adopted, in any case, at least theoretically, they don't have to review it. But what, much to our surprise, actually, when we submitted to them, they actually reviewed it, made comments, asked questions, got back to us, we responded, got back, had some dialogue, and what you have before you now is a combination of those comments and what was approved by the Commission prior. Essentially, this is kind of the last word, that the city, if there are changes made to it, I would strongly believe that the state would not support it, and unfortunately, under the current state law, we don't have any choice but to adopt this type of ordinance. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but essentially, not that our hands are tied, but that this is the final document and it's acceptable to the State of California.
Thank you John. Alma?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, as indicated, this is Zone Code Amendment 2020-05, which is a proposal to amend Norco Municipal Code, Section 1830.46, updating the requirements for accessory dwelling units, or what is referred to as ADUs. So basically, what you have before you is going to replace in its entirety what is currently in our code, and I included the current section of the code with respect to ADUs, and in your ordinance, you have what is being proposed to you tonight, and all in the intent to make this our ADU ordinance in compliance with state law. One of the things that I do need to point out is that when the Planning Commission originally reviewed this Zone Code Amendment, it included some, an ordinance pertaining to caretaker dwellings. In this case, we have not, that's been kind of set aside, and per direction by Planning Commission and ultimately the City Council, if the Council eventually wants to allow caretakers and temporary mobile homes for the elderly to continue, you know, we would just basically leave everything as is, but if they want those removed and only allow ADUs, then we'd come back to the Plan... they want those removed and only allow ADUs, then we'd come back to the Planning Commission with a code amendment for that. So, that'll happen based on direction by Planning Commission, ultimately the City Council. So what I'm gonna do now is just provide you with a, just a summary of just what is being incorporated into the new ordinance, and just kind of give you, just a little bit of a, a difference as far as what exists now in our municipal code. So, I'll do that. Um, so basically, I'm gonna go ahead and go over some of the major bullet points, and that's what we're, and just basically in a summary of what is being provided tonight. So, as far as ADUs and junior ADUs are allowed, per this, the zoning, proposed zoning code amendment, ADUs and junior ADUs would be allowed in all zones that allow residential uses. Before, our municipal code basically only allowed ADUs in the R1 and the R3 zones. The second item, a single property with an existing or proposed primary dwelling can have both an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, and a junior ADU. Before, in our, our previous municipal code, uh, the term for junior ADUs wasn't, wasn't pretty much addressed, but in this new ordinance, it is now. An ADU is basically maximum 500 square feet, and it has to be contained within the confines of an existing primary dwelling. And you can have an ADU and a junior ADU on a property. Uh, let's see now, okay. An application for an ADU or junior ADU may be made by the property owner of a lot in question or their designated contractor. That's pretty much the same as before. Uh, let's see. Approval of an ADU or junior ADU is done at staff level and must be approved for construction, issuance of a building permit within 60 days of a complete application. Now, before, if I remember correctly, it used to require a review, separate review by, by planning staff and architectural review, straight to building permit process. Now, when we say complete application, I mean, that could take, when everything is complete, you know, we have all the required documentation in accordance to the rules and regulations, that's what we're referring to. Let's see. And the city ca, the city cannot require approval of an ADU by the Planning Commission. The inclusion of an ADU or junior ADU must comply with the lot coverage requirements of 40% of the flat pad, uh, must be, and, but, it cannot, but an ADU of at least 800 square feet cannot be precluded. So my understanding, and I think maybe John could, um, uh, you know, make sure that I'm saying this correctly, in other words, if, if there is, if there's an, if the lot coverage is exceeded, we can't deny an ADU, we have to at least allow 800 square feet, am I correct? Okay. Okay, so the addition of an ADU or junior, uh, junior ADU must still preserve an open animal keeping ear, area equal to the allowed number of animal units on the, on the lot in question that does not have a, a, a primary animal keeping area, unless such precludes the construction of an 800 square foot ADU, which shall be allowed to encroach to the minimum extent possible. So, it's same thing, I mean, if, if, there, you know, we'll do our best to make sure that they're out of it, but if it precludes it, there has to be some kind of, uh, maybe a minimal encroachment. The maximum allowed size ADUs and junior ADUs are as follows. For an attached to the primary dwelling, or, and, you know, attached to any other structure, 850 square feet for a 01 bedroom, and 1,000 square feet for a 2 bedroom, detached, a maximum of 1,200 square feet. A junior ADU, as I indicated, 500 square feet maximum, and again, that, the junior ADU has to be, uh, within the confines of an existing primary dwelling. If the accessory unit is created from converting existing space in a primary accessory structure, which is basically a detached accessory structure, like a garage or a barn, um, there's no size limitation. ADUs and junior ADUs can be rented separately from the primary residence, but cannot be sold separately. The parking requirement is, is one space per unit that doesn't have to be covered, so as long as there's provision on the site for one parking space, that's fine. If, um, if a garage is converted to an ADU, they do not have to replace those parking spaces. So that's something that, that was different from our, our previous ordinance. Uh, let's see. The minimum side and rear yard requirements for an ADU is, is four feet. All ADUs and junior ADUs are subject to the payment of application fees, you know, at the time of building permits and middle. ADUs that are, um, 750 square feet or larger are subject to impact fees. ADUs that are less than 750 square feet are exempt from impact fees. For ADUs 750 square feet or greater, the impact fees are proportional to the relationship of an ADU to, um, a primary dwelling. Uh, let's see. Junior ADUs cannot be rented for periods of less than 30 days, in other words, kind of like a, what is, uh, kind of looked at as a short-term rental. The rental ADUs on a short-term basis is similar to the primary dwelling as whether or not it's allowed, or, basically how it's written in our code, in the less than 30 days. Owner occupancy for a lot with a junior, um, ADU is required, with the owner living in the primary dwelling or the junior ADU. Owner occupancy is not required for, uh, the regular ADU. All detached ADUs from the primary dwelling are required to be serviced from a separate water, water service and meter. So as I indicated earlier, I have attached, I did attach our existing, um, municipal code, the verbiage in our existing municipal code, and, uh, the ordinance or resolution that has been attached includes all the specifics, it's, it's pretty lengthy, as far as the, what's being proposed to bring our ordinance in compliance with state law. There is a couple of things that I do need to point out, and I apologize. On page five of the resolution, there's a couple of, of things that I need to correct, and I, I went through this thoroughly to make sure that everything that was, um, uh, that was required of the state is in here. Page five, item K, L, where it's written, "Windows and doors are prohibited along walls adjacent to the side and rear property lines," where the wall is closer than 10 feet from the property line. To correct, how it should be written, it says, "Windows and doors are permitted along walls adjacent to the side and rear property lines, in compliance with state standards." So that needs to be corrected. And just for clarification, for, you know, just to make it at ease, um, item N, two, accessory dwelling units shall not exceed 16 feet, and that's referring to height, so I just wanna add the word height in there, just to make sure that it's, it's pretty clear. And that's basically it. With that, I, I will conclude. Answer any questions? And, um, yeah, staff is here to answer any questions, as the commission, um, uh, needs clarification. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Janet, questions of staff?
No, I have no questions.
Danny, questions of staff?
The junior one was attached to the house. They, I've just, I didn't read all this, or part of it, but they can't have any kind of kitchen in it, anything small for cooking, eating, anything like that?
They can't, if you look at, um...
Which number is it? I was just wondering.
Yeah, if you look at page six of the resolution, the, uh, item, uh, six of junior accessory dwelling units. Yeah, if you look at item G of item six, or, so the section six, item G, kitchen requirements, the junior accessory dwelling, it shall, shall include an efficiency kitchen, including a food preparation counter and storage cabinets, yeah. Uh-huh.
Mark, questions of staff?
Couple of them. Um, how does it work with somebody converting an existing outbuilding to an accessory dwelling unit under this?
They can't, it just, um, they can convert it, and there's no size limit, as long as they're, you know, if they stay within the confines of the accessory do, uh, the accessory structure, that's what we've, I know, I get them confused. There's, they can convert the whole thing if they like, according to...
And then just a general hypothetical question, I know lawyers love hypothetical questions. Yes, this is a state requirement?
Lawyers also don't speculate, but go ahead.
But, um, hypothetically, if a city chose to ignore the state requirement, what are the ramifications of not coming into compliance?
The state not only will enforce these requirements, but has, now has the authority to file suit and seek damages. You go to court, you go to court, and the judge will tell you, you gotta do it whether you like it or not, and they will, uh, award damages to the state of California and potentially the property owner.
Thanks.
I mean, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Actually, actually, that's a good question, because it used to be that HED didn't have any authority to do much of anything.
Right.
They just sent you, when, when the housing element didn't comply, they sent out letters to every housing agency they could think of, and, uh, hoping that so, they'd do something about it, but the law changed.
What's the difference between getting a nasty note?
Absolutely.
And getting taken to court and forced to comply, so.
Yeah, the, the statute was amended to specifically give HED the authority to do that now.
No other questions?
Yeah, I got a question. John, is if it's historical, in order, does it have to follow the rules, if the property is?
No.
They don't have to?
You mean, if, if, if in fact, if in fact the city formed the historical district that they're not talking about, no, this isn't exempt?
They're not still?
No, actually, there's only one, oh, I don't know that you care about this that much, but there's only one statute which, proposed statute, which exempts historical districts, and that's SB 9, Weiner's bill, which is currently before the state legislature, although, as we discovered today, that it was withdrawn from consideration by the, the committee that would, is next in line. Uh, it was going to be heard at its March 18th meeting, and is not, nobody knows what that means, or whether it'll be modified or reintroduced, but, at any rate, SB 9 is the only statute which allows that exemption.
My question about the junior ADUs, why do they have those? I mean, people rent rooms in their houses all the time, so, does it change because of the kitchen facilities?
No, and you can sell them.
You can sell?
I mean, somebody could, somebody could take title.
Somebody could what?
Just like a, just like a junior unit, I mean, a, a regular ADU. Uh, but, but it, but is...
I mean, you can't sell part of your house.
But, but as a, but as a practical matter, what it does is allow you to convert some portion of your residence to essentially an additional housing unit.
Yeah, because in a regular house, you can only have one kitchen, but you're allowing it, because you're calling it a...
Well, that's what I'm thinking, because people rent rooms in their houses all the time, and there's...
Yeah, but you can have a, you can have another kitchen.
Now you can have the kitchen facilities.
And I expect that there are more than a few people, actually, I can think of one in my family, that rents a duplex that is supposed to be a single-family house, but has two kitchens.
Okay, all right, yeah, I just wondered why that...
But that's, that's the purpose of theoretically, it allows another, uh, housing unit.
Well, but it, it says here, they cannot be sold separately.
No, you're, you're correct.
No, they can't be sold.
Yeah, sold separately, I mean, they, they would, they would have to buy...
That's actually, because I've got SB 9 stuck in my mind.
Yeah, because, because that would be not good if we had...
That would really be not good.
And unfortunately, that is one of the things that SB 9 would allow, is the building of up to four units on your lot, and the sale of those lots.
Wow.
Yeah, and that, that's, yeah, and that would be dangerous, because that's without subdividing.
So Pat, can I, because I've got a couple of comments, and I'd just like to understand a little better.
Sure.
And I did do the research on it, um, with...
Mistake.
Well, I, I, I may have consulted with somebody who knows about the legislature. There's a couple of things. So, on, in part of our code, it says we're gonna set a height limit at 16 feet. What I read, what I just read, is we're gonna set a height limit at 16 feet.
Yeah.
Which means you can't put, I'm, I'm asking for clarification, which means, if I've got a 12-foot garage, I can't put more than four feet on top of the garage, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I got a couple other ones here. It, it says, uh, this is page four, I, it says, "The accessory dwelling unit shall be provided with parking that is in addition to that required of the main dwelling." Parking for the main dwelling is pursuant to chapter 1838, which is our parking. Parking for accessory dwelling units shall be, as listed below. So, does that mean that we have to, we as a city have to increase the amount of street parking, or is that parking on, onsite parking?
Unfortunately, uh, I have a found page for you.
I don't think it's specific, and when I looked, when I looked it up in the state code, I did, I couldn't see where that is, but it is a restriction.
On page four.
Page four, page four, I.
I, yeah, I.
But it does say off-street parking.
Right, but off-street parking is limited.
They have a limit how far away.
But, but, it, it, you're, so, good, good point, Danny. I mean, they could, they could, so, they could park, ah, a mile and a half away, and it's still okay?
There is a, a limit, how far, if you can, you can park off, off like that, and it's okay. I haven't seen it on here, but there is.
Okay, I, I'd like, I...
Range.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm just, as a part of discussion, um, it says, "Except as," and this is F, on the same page, "Except as otherwise provided in this section, accessory dwelling units shall comply with all development requirements for new, single-family dwelling units as specified for the land use district in which it is located." So that includes total maximum lot coverage, height provisions, SEPAP requirements, height requirements? Is this all enforced?
Except as they're inconsistent with what this ordinance says.
Okay, but this, this ordinance, which ordinance are you talking about? Because I'm talking about what we're, what we're doing.
Except to the extent that the development standards in, currently in place, would be inconsistent with the ord, the 2020, the ADU ordinance.
Okay, all right. So it can, I got it, we got it totally.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, except as otherwise provided in this section, is essentially, means that this ADU ordinance trumps that otherwise development.
Okay, page, page five, N, is, it says, under, uh, page five, N, N as in Nancy, design, II, accessory dwelling units shall not exceed 16 feet in height. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so 16 feet in height above ground? 16 feet in height above the existing building? 16 feet in height?
Above, above, above ground, I mean...
Okay, can we, can we, can we stipulate that?
And just, just for clarification on that, uh, 16 feet in height from, uh...
Finished floor.
Finished floor. Finished floor, and, um, yeah, we can definitely, from finished floor to the peak.
So if I've got a, I'm just using an example. If I've got a garage, my current garage is about like 12 feet high.
Yeah.
I can go four feet above my, because the finished floor is the floor of the garage, correct?
Actually, what it probably should say is finished grade. I mean, that's, that's how we measure.
Finished grade.
It's the finished floor from the front of the garage, just the slab.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm trying to keep us...
16 feet, even forgetting this ordinance, uh, the existing ordinance in second, our second dwelling, our second ord, second unit ordinance, uh, that, that debate has been ongoing. Uh, council, council members view it differently, for example. Uh, but, but what we, what we have measured from is the finished grade.
Yeah, and, and just, just for clarification, in, in our, and again, this is separate from the accessory dwelling unit. In our accessory building ordinance, one thing that was clarified, because it's hard sometimes when the ground is, you know, they, they came, the, there was a code amendment that said specifically, um, height is measured from finished floor, measured from, from the front of the building, you're correct, Danny, to the peak. So, um...
So 16 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
So the intent is to make it consistent.
Okay, so when we, if we're gonna approve this, can we modify N, II, or N2, to say that, from finished grade, 16 feet from finished grade?
From finished grade or, or finished floor?
Floor.
Finished floor.
It sounds like, based upon what Alma just said.
Finished floor, I think you said it correctly, finished floor.
And, and if you notice, just, just for, for your benefit here, um, I did put, I did put that in your, um, handout, uh, let's see, it's in this, this pretty little handout that I gave you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, um, item seven, it's, uh, excuse me, maximum height. Item, uh, eight height, maximum height is 16 feet at the peak from finished floor. So we can just, you know, we can just make sure that it's, the, the ordinance reads the same. Does that make sense?
Okay, I think, I think my point is, I don't wanna, there, there's nothing about me that thinks that we should ignore what state law is. that we should ignore what state law is, but it also feels like we should respect the rights of the people who are here, and so I'm just trying to hit on some of these. I think, I think those are all the ones I had, Pat, so I'm done for now. Let's see, let's see what else comes up.
Well, we haven't even gotten to the public, so. That end of questions, we'll go ahead and open the public part of this. And let me read my, now is the time to dial in for public comment. You will, you will be placed in a queue, and your call will be answered in the order received. You have, you will have three minutes to speak. The call will disconnect promptly at the end of three minutes. You will need to call during each item you wish to speak upon. Callers are asked to abide by public decorum and use language that is appropriate to a public environment. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. If you choose not to call in, please email your public comments to planningcommission@ci.noco.ca.us. Please identify the item you are referencing. Lacy, do we have any?
I currently do not have any emails. Mark, any phone calls? No phone calls.
Do, do you want to, we did receive two, right? Just two letters?
Yes, those emails came in prior to the planning commission.
Particularly based upon the complaint that we received, you know, one of the things we probably need to do is wait a little longer, and, because that's, I think, what happened, is there weren't any calls, and cut it off, but it was while somebody was dialing the number, so maybe we kind of have a rule that we wait a couple minutes to make sure that-
Okay.
I got a question. Is this still open?
It's public comment, so.
Okay. Is there any, on these juniors that are attached to the house, is there any amount of people they can have in these rooms? I mean, we-
Trust her.
Oh, yeah, vacancy and-
Vacancies in the house that they, that they can have, I mean, you can go crazy if they bring a whole family of-
Who's going to check that, Danny?
Yeah, who's going to force it?
Well, just like horses.
I don't think there is.
The reason why I say that, I go in many, many apartments, and it's overwhelmed how many people are stuffed in that apartment, it's over, unbelievable.
There is something, but I won't be able to actually check that.
And the news, they get rent per person in the room.
Yeah, well, sometimes that's true.
I mean, I've been there, I've been with the code enforcement, they get, they even say it, they get so much ahead, and how many they can stuff in their bedrooms.
And they get so much per animal, I mean, it's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're probably good now.
Okay, all right, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Any one want, any more discussion or make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion, if you can hear me, make a motion that we approve Zone Code Amendment 2020-05 with the following amendment, which is that the height is, I'm sorry, this is NII, accessory dwelling units shall not exceed 16 feet in height from finished floor.
Finished floor, yeah.
Didn't we have?
Also an amendment to-
Yeah, didn't we have another one? Yes.
Yeah, I had, I had the one that I talked about earlier.
Yeah, okay, so.
All right, I'll second the motion.
I have a motion from member Jafarian and a second from member DeLapp. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission members Askey?
Yes.
DeLapp?
Yes.
Jafarian?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We have a business item 3A, you just need to, do you need any type of motion, Alma?
No, I just received and filed that this will be submitted to the, in compliance with state law, to the Office of Planning and Research and HCD, and we did pass out, I know there was a little bit of cutoff, and we did give that to you, kind of gave you a better explanation as far as what's going to be, you know, in that section, so that's basically it.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the Planning Commission oral reports, request, anyone? I do have one. When Steve was here on a quarterly basis-
Chair Hedges, I need a motion and a second to receive and file, sorry.
Oh, please.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
I'll second the motion.
And before you do, I'd say this, before you do that, there, since this is an agenda item, you have to ask the same questions if there's somebody who would like to make comment.
Oh, okay. We will open the public hearing.
And you've got so many requirements.
Now is the time to dial in for public comment. You will be placed in a queue, and your call will be answered in the order received. You will have three minutes to speak. The call will disconnect promptly at the end of three minutes. You will need to call during each item you wish to speak upon. Callers are asked to abide by public decorum and use language that is appropriate to a public environment. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. If you choose not to call in, please email your public comments to planningcommission@ci.noco.ca.us. Please identify the item you are referencing.
You have one more meeting before you take that away and you have to do it from memory.
Really, really? I'm going to have to practice it. You know, on business items, we don't always have it open to the public, so.
But, but the Brown Act requires that if somebody wants to comment on whether it's a business item or public hearing, that you have the right to do that part of making a decision.
Do we have any calls or emails, Lacy? Well, we'll wait for a minute. Never know. The excitement on the housing report, sorry.
Given the circumstances, that's probably good.
Yeah, okay, we'll close the public hearing. All right, now, should we make a motion?
Make a motion that we receive and file the annual progress report?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion from member Jafarian and a second from member DeLapp. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Member Askey?
Yes.
Member DeLapp?
Yes.
Member Jafarian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Planning Commission oral reports, I don't believe we have any requests for future agenda items, and Steve, on a quarterly basis, we ask him to give us an update on things we had voted on, and what was the progress, what had happened during that time? Did they pass, did the people actually do the work? Do you remember that? I don't remember what we called it. Do you remember what it was called? Phil?
Progress status report. I think you've, you know, prepared-
Yeah, just on things we, just to kind of see what the progress was.
Sure, 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 yeah. It's a progress status, a status report, progress, progress report of the-
Can we have one of those?
Of course.
Thank you.
Sure, of course.
All right. We are now ended.